Recording started.
Thank you. This is Ray Weldy, Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors. 6:00 PM, September 23rd, 2020. We're about to commence with the 6:00 PM to 6:30 PM meeting with the fire departments. The Board of Supervisors is present. Ms. Kaplan? You're here?
I'm, yeah, I'm here.
Thanks. I'm just going to do a little roll call. I'm sorry. Mr. Kutsaratus?
Yes.
Here. Great. Ms. Cummings?
Yes.
Thanks. Mr. Shannon? Ed?
Can you hear me now?
Perfect, Ed. Thank you.
Okay.
And Ray Weldy. So we're, we're ready to go. Joe, do you want to get things started with a little intro? And then we'll go from there?
Sure. On our last meeting that we had, or last board meeting, we went through the redevelopment authority application. Prior to going through the four applications, there was a discussion or were any comments with regard to the two fire companies and the past practice of some of them not being funded even though they submitted RD8 grants. My intention was to make sure that the two fire companies were taken care of equally in this given cycle for RD8 grants. Therefore, we would give them an allocation each of $35,000 for this respective upcoming year, and that would be a budgeted item, a guaranteed item. And then we had the four applications that we proceeded to put in priority. And then we did have a meeting, or I had a meeting with the two fire chiefs, and they were having a meeting tonight to discuss the procurement of mini pumper. So this is their time to give us their knowledge on the mini pumper issue and comment that they were making.
Great. And I see representatives of Feasterville. So if you guys could introduce yourselves and then we'll give you a few minutes to outline your opinion on what's being proposed?
Good afternoon. My name is David Walters, Chief of Fire Company. And I am Stephen Brooks, the Chief of the Lower Southampton Fire Company. So this was brought to our attention last week. We, obviously, everybody knows we weren't quite at any kind of work session to discuss what we have in the past eight to 10 years with this supervisor sitting down discussing projects for the RDA. My fan out of this town in, I was kind of opposed to be a little upset about it. The township is proposing a mini pumper for Fire Marshal's Office to use during hours of their normal working operating days. We have four apparatus already in place that's fully equipped, ready to go. And our recommendation to the Board is to table this issue, if we can, and utilize the equipment that we already have in place, saving money and other various things.
Is, okay. And why should we table it then? Because I think you guys have some reasons maybe that you want to elaborate on why it should be tabled and why you believe this isn't the best time or a good idea?
Well, one reason is it's a non-needed piece of apparatus right now. We have the apparatus that can be used within this township. I currently have three pieces of apparatus here, four pieces counting this special service, and Feasterville has four pieces of apparatus at their station. And this is apparatus that can be used. Fire Marshal's Office has been using my engine all year, all year long during COVID. It's something that's there that can be used, and the apparatus in this township should be used. Right now, the Fire Marshal's, when they get a call, they respond to either station and man our truck right now. If they're closer to the call, they may respond to the call and go right to the scene. But nine times out of 10, they're coming to either station, pick up station one, and supplementing the valve gear on our truck. We talked to Ryan Smith earlier in the year about this program. Other townships, Middletown Township does the same thing, where they acquire an engine from Pendel Fire Company, and they utilize that truck during their hours of work every day. The cost that the township puts out is the cost for fuel, any maintenance that's required to that truck while they're, you know, operating that truck during their business hours. There's a contract that is signed, and by both the township and the fire department, you know, there's a 14-page contract that, you know, something we can look into or discuss. I just think that we're putting the cart before the horse here. We need, we need people who, you know, need some full timers in the Fire Marshal's Office. We currently, right now, only have one full-time person, and that is our current Fire Marshal. Everybody else is part-time, and with the COVID, we have a few individuals that are there, you know, one or two days a week. We need, we need people to come in to be able to ride in trucks, trucks purchased. And we just think that we can already use the trucks that we have in place if we come up with some kind of agreement.
Okay. Is Ryan Smith here, Joe? Can he weigh in on this from the Fire Marshal's end or not?
He should be on.
Ryan, can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm here.
Ryan, were you able to hear Chief Walters and Chief Brooks' opinions?
Yeah. So right now, Middletown does use leases out Pendell's fire truck for them, for the Fire Marshal's Office to use during the day. And then they also have a special service truck and a utility truck that they, that they use. Bristol has their, Bristol Township has their own piece of apparatus, along with Ben Salem has their own engine and also a special service truck that they use. I'm not sure about Newtown, the surrounding towns, what Newtown does.
The surrounding towns utilize a fire truck, not a field truck. So I have a list. Ben Salem has a big truck. Middletown has a big truck. Newtown Township has a big truck. Bristol Township's got a big truck. When I say big truck, I mean like your actual fire engines that we have here. North Hampton has one. Warrington has one. And our surrounding, Montgomery County, Wood Grove, Port Shire, and Burnham also has one as well. They're responding, actually, with a wrecker fire truck that carries the five-inch supply hose that's laying from the hydrant. This truck here that they're looking to purchase is basically a front truck. There's no ladders on it. There's no five-inch hose. You pull up to a dwelling where somebody's trapped on the second floor, and they can get out a window, there'll be no ladder. If they were utilized by big trucks, everything's on that truck ready, ready to go to work.
Ryan, I, I, I mean, I surmise that you support this mini pumper. What would be your reason, since you're the acting Fire Marshal, to, to support it? Why would, why, why should we get it?
So for the mini pumper tack truck, it would handle about 90% to 95% of the calls that we get in this township, going back from 2019, for fire alarms, we had 233 of them. Brush fires, we had nine. Car fires, there's a report of 14. And dwellings, there's a report of 20, which I'd own a handful turned out to be something. This year so far, we had three dumpster fires, 15 dwellings, which about six of them turned out to be something. 22 brush fires and five building fires. So currently, right now, I'm in the office. I have one up part-timer, and then there's two per dams that work three days. There's two of them. Each of them work three days a week. Currently, if there's a call, they normally go stop what they're doing, will go to either station, and then wait for members and get, get the truck out and go to a scene. This truck would be able to stop us from going to the firehouses to get to the scene. If there's a, you know, car fire, it'll get us to the scene quicker. It will have, it does not need five inches. It's going to have three inches to lay in for the hydrant. It's also going to have a, one ladder, which is going to be a little giant on the, on the, on the truck, along with a one combi tool to be used, like if you're on a car fire and there had to be emergency and the hood or door had to be popped open. This is not too.
Is this a two-door or four-door mini pumper, Ryan?
This will be a two-door, but it's a little bit of a standard cab. Two members will be on the, on the truck. And either one or two members will be in the regular Fire Marshal's cars.
And this is a 300-gallon capacity, water capacity with, was it 550?
Correct. 550 gallons per minute.
Now, what if you need more water, Ryan? Is it possible to run a, because I've read up on some of these where you can, they, it's possible to run a one and a half to three-inch line to them and hook it up to a hydrant. Is that possible with this vehicle or not?
Yes. This will have three inch on it to hook up to the hydrant.
How many, how many feet of hose will this have to be able to hook up to a fire hydrant?
Let me look at the exact specs.
Can I say this real quick? I've been, I've been a member of Feasterville for 26 years. We, in my 26 years, the only time I use three-inch hose on a fire hydrant is to fill the truck up if we're doing some kind of training exercise. Right now, we use LDH, orange hammer to hose, okay? That's our five-inch supply hose that we use in any fire we go to. Whether it be a building, you know, large car fire, truck fire, house fire, we use it. We're going backwards here, but using three-inch hose instead of five-inch. Not going to be getting the same amount of water to buy that truck. Our pumps, our T and I pumps are 2,000 gallon a minute pump. This is a 550. You're going to have a small truck out in front of the house, block the whole entranceway. And we, you know, what we're trying to do here, the Fire Marshal's Office will go to either station. The new station wants a truck this week to take the truck. They will park that Fire Marshal's, drive it to the car at the station. They will ride that truck all day long, be readily available to go to a fire call. They got to do inspections. The truck goes to inspection. They will go to McDonald's for lunch. The truck goes to McDonald's for lunch. I just don't understand why, you know, it's hard to do, utilize the truck that we already have here. It's already established that they're buying something new.
Well, do you have staff problems during the day at the fire station?
Every, every station in Buck County has staff problems during the day. It's not just us, everybody. Today, we had a fire call. We had a building fire. I got two trucks out today. I've been in the stations, giving people each truck, but we got two trucks out today. It's hit or miss. You know, some days are great, some days aren't. The township had a couple of people off the public birth department that were firing that ran both departments, you know, us and ours down. We don't have them now. They're not around. So that, that kind of hurts, you know, us in both areas of, you know, responding as well during the day.
I'm, I'm, I'm not very much of a fireman, but how big a truck would it be to go around and inspect different buildings or whatever they have to do? How big, how big a vehicle is available, I should say, to do that without this small pumper or whatever?
They can do that in the trucks they currently have. It's just when the alarm turns off, they need to go to one of the two parts, which is what they've been doing.
Now, I'm asking how big a pump, how big a machine is it that would be driven around, let's say, all day to do inspections?
It would be a small engine, like a small engine I have carries 750 gallons of water. It has 1,000 feet of box and hose on it. It has 200, or two, two cross legs for fighting fires, 200. Are we talking about the length of the truck or, like, you say how big? Did we talk about the length of the truck?
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking about if, if somebody has to go and inspect the building, you know, for the sake of a better argument, what, how big is this vehicle to put in a parking lot, to put in a parking space, you know, outside the building? I'm just asking questions right now because I don't know.
It's larger than putting it in a parking space. They're probably 30 feet. And every, every, out of the eight trucks we had, every truck we fit down, every street is down. They respect, they fit down our roads. Now, obviously, you could get on a road and get in the parking lot. Obviously, the parking might be found in parking street.
So I have a question. We, we have two members from our township here, combined. How many years experience do you have between the two of you?
I've been in the fire service since 1986. I've been into 92.
So we have two gentlemen here from our township with many, many years' experience that are coming here and giving us this information about this truck. And to best of my knowledge here, recommending that it is not something that is recommended by either of them.
Not this truck that he's spec'd out, no.
So we're discussing, we're discussing the truck. However, I would like to hear from them what it is that, that, that they would like. We still have, we still have till September 30th for the deadline for the RDA. Is it something that you would like to see for the fire department, for your man, for the township, that we could replace a pumper truck with something else? So I'd like to hear your recommendation.
We both were planning on coming to the Board this year. RDA proposed our gear. Our gear is good for 10 years. Every 10 years, it replaces. So myself and Chief Brooks came up with some numbers. We're looking at 15 sets a year. I actually bought helmets for my, my guys and girls. He didn't get the quote for helmets. So my quote for 15 set a year is 15,000, I'm sorry, $53,205. So I have a quote, and if we had to write a grant, you know, by the end of whatever deal, we'd definitely make that happen.
So.
And I also, I also was looking at 15 sets a year. We use two different vendors, and mine, my price came out for $47,760.
You're talking about turnout gear, right?
That's right.
So if this is something that could be put before us, and the RDA does not close until September 30th, we would still have time to prevent, to prevent, to present a grant. Or, I know Cindy Bowen was out discussing the grants back probably February. She probably, she probably could grant, write the grant overnight and bring it to the Board.
Correct.
If I, if I could speak, this is Joe Galdo. As far as the gear, as far as the gear, that was proposed actually last year. And from what I was told from the Fire Company at the time, was that they didn't need, they didn't need the gear. Because that was in a PowerPoint demonstration last year. That's why that wasn't asked with regard to gear in this year. And as far as gear, I mean, let's say it this way. I think firefighters' assistance grants may be a better use for gear, and the state gives out that money just for submitting an application. That may work better. And then you could use something else for the RDA application.
Is that grant, is the firefighter's assistant grant going to be something that would be in play this year with the, with the pandemic? Is it something that they even have funds for? I mean, here it is before us, and we know that this could be more of a guaranteed, instead of putting it off for something.
Well, two issues, I believe it is, but also they are, in what I made out before, is that they are getting guaranteed dollars, and that was worth the $35,000 won for for each Fire Company.
And gentlemen, can you give us a, you know, a synopsis of the 35,000 and the, the use for that? Because I know that there was something purchased with your funds that now that you're not having the funds for the turnout gear.
Yes. We, Feasterville, we, we came to the RDA for two years in a row, asking for an air cast aid system. We were turned down two years in a row. So we had to turn it down out of pocket. That's something we need to have in the station utilized on a daily basis. We spent $52,000 in change on that. So this money, we get the $35,000 to go back, pay them bills, you know, pay some, some of that for the air cast aid we're working.
So then there wouldn't be the money for the turnout gear. So we would, so propose, you're proposing to have us do the RDA towards that turnout gear?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So when is your turnout, if I could ask, when is your turnout gear's usage expired? It's good for 10 years, right?
That's correct. 2024 is, I'm going to have to get all new turnout gear. And we try not to do it all at once. So it's better to spread it out, so it's not all at once. Correct.
And relief, relief money actually covers gear too.
What does? I couldn't hear you.
Relief dollars.
Correct. That's what we die from. Correct.
That's what I'm saying. You have that also at play too. So you got a multitude of buckets on where they can get gear or gear from, whether it's, whether it's through relief themselves or, and or through the $35,000 allocation. So there's a multitude of things. Unless, you know, if they, I, I told them.
I, I have a few things I'd like to talk about too, guys, if I can. I did ask Ryan a few minutes ago if he could tell me how many feet of hose would be on the, the pumper truck. That was my first question. Ryan, do you, did you ever find that out?
Yes. We'll have about five, 400 to 500 feet of three-inch.
Okay. And.
I don't see that on your track.
And, and as far as like a full-size truck, how many feet are on a, you know, on one of the, the full-size trucks?
1,200.
1,200. How?
I haven't found.
Okay. How far, I mean, you know, we don't know where a fire might pop up, but, you know, you drive through the community. Yeah. I mean, you know, the fire hydrants are sparse, you know. You know, one concern I have is that, you know, that's not enough hose. Another, another question I have for Ryan, Ryan had said that 95% of our calls, this pumper truck could handle. But I imagine 100% of our calls, one of the larger trucks could handle. I mean, it seems like, you know, you're going to something that can handle 95%, which is terrific. But in reality, the trucks that the two departments have can handle more than that.
Tim, what you have is a trade-off. This is Joe. What you're having is a trade-off of time versus 100%. So you're able, in the smaller vehicle, you're able to get hypothetically, you're able to get there quicker. With the other vehicle, yeah, you can probably handle and do the damage and do 100%. It's, it's a trade-off.
Yeah. Yeah. I understand there's no perfect situation, but this, this doesn't seem like it's a perfect situation either. So I, another question I have, I guess, for the, I'll refer to the Fire Marshal and the two chiefs as our, as our experts. You know, ultimately, the supervisors are concerned for the well-being of our, of our citizens, you know, first and foremost. Do you guys really feel, and I want to know why, do you guys really feel that this is absolutely not going to make things safer? Because if it's really not going to make things safer, you know, I, that, that's, that's an issue for me right there. So I'd like to hear, I guess, from the two fire chiefs and from Ryan. I mean, is this really going to make it safer? Or could this possibly make things, you know, not as safe if, if this truck turns out to a, a fire situation and it's not large enough? Now we have to move, move the equipment around to bring in a larger truck? I know that was spoke about the, the other night over at Feasterville, that that could be an issue that, you know, one truck might have to move for the other, and then it slows things up. So I'd like to get a little feedback from, from the experts here.
I'm not going to say that it's, it's not going to make things safer. It, any, any piece of apparatus can help. It's just at this point, for Lower Southampton Township, it's a not-needed piece of apparatus. We need to utilize the apparatus that we currently have with the manpower that we currently have. And that manpower during the day includes the Fire Marshal's Office. And there's no reason for the township to go out and spend $167,000 for this truck when we have the apparatus that can be used.
And I have a question to the Board too as well. Like I said earlier, we have one full-time Fire Marshal in the, in the township right now, Fire Marshal, Fire Inspector. Is there any plans in the near future to hire some more, whether it be full-time or part-time? Because there's, there's some equations right now where, you know, the other two people might not be in office. Ryan Smith can be by himself for half a day or sometimes, you know, full day. It doesn't happen that often, but, you know, the possibility is there.
Can, can you guys give me an idea of what the, what the costs are for the pumper versus a, an engine? What the, like, the annual costs or whatever might, might be involved in that?
Sure. In 2017, Feasterville Fire Company spent 7,095 hours on, on a maintenance on Engine One, the truck that we would utilize. In 2018, we spent $7,780. In 2019, we spent $5,381. And year-to-date so far, $3,332. And I didn't figure any fuel, because our fuel comes in, you know, we pay for fuel at the station in one tank. But I didn't have time to go through all the, every truck to see how the gallon. So that's not going to be, the fuel bill will probably be a little more expensive, you know, for a truck running around eight hours a day. You know, right now, we're running the truck, you know, the call, keep going, something like that. So I didn't factor the fuel call. That, that's not going to be, you know, not grand. That's happening to be anything by less than $1,000, you know, somewhere around $1,000.
And how often do you, how often is that taken out normally?
It depends. Every, you know, day, week, month, you know, depends on business.
Can, can you give me some idea of what the difference in cost would be to use that truck full-time as opposed to what it's being used for now? And what it would be, as I said, using full-time? Do you have any feel for that?
I don't think you can provide a number because it all depends on how the truck's being used.
You, I, I think it would be safe to assume that it would probably, at least at a minimum double, probably exponentially, at, at a minimum. Because there would be more wear and tear on the vehicles, driving it every day, day in, day out, five days out of the week. So I would probably believe it would be safe or conservative enough to say probably double the maintenance cost on that.
I also have a question for the Board. Right now, the Fire Marshals may respond to a fire call. That's how it's written. They may respond. So they could be at a, they could be at a inspection and decide, I don't want to go to that call. So if this new truck goes through, does that maybe become a must? And they must respond to fire calls? And whoever you hire to be the Fire Marshal's Office or firefighters?
Well, that, Ryan, is that your intention?
Ryan Smith? That'd be more of a question for you guys there or Joe?
Yeah. As far, as far as the, the staffing, our goal and objective for 2021 is to make that department more robust. Additional bodies in there and kind of a repositioning of the department. So we're trying to merge that with the apparatus, and that's, that was the intention, trying to have a better manning solution for the daytime and tie it in with the new apparatus. So, but that's what our goal is for the 2021 budget. And I foresee that happening, but it may take some, you know, some, some a little bit of coordination on the budget side.
So, so, so does that mean we would have to pay them as like full-time firemen or just as deputy Fire Marshals? Or is, is there a difference in the pay scale with that?
It's, it's governed, the Fire Marshal's Office is governed by the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement. The individuals would be Teamsters. And that's how it's always been.
So the individuals would what again, Joe? I'm sorry.
They, I'm sorry. They would, they would be part of the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement, just as Ryan, just as the past employees have been. They're part of the CBA.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be obligated then to pay them a higher rate because now they're, I guess, considered full-time, a full-time fire.
Fire, yeah. They're, they're in the Fire Marshal's Office, just like when William was there. You had two, two other people typically there, and they were part of the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement. They were considered Fire Inspectors also, but slash, you know, fire, fire people that would handle day-to-day fires and go to the stations. So where our, our intention is to go back to that same paradigm and kind of tweak it a little bit, so we could support the two Fire Companies.
You know, I think.
Again, that's another reason why to get this truck. It's not even stat. Maybe it needs to be tabled for next year and properly spec'd out and get the proper truck for that type of situation.
Steve, Steve and Dave, I, I have a couple of questions for you about the truck. Is, is this mini pumper similar in any way to a tack? Is is this mini pumper similar in any way to a tactical fire attack truck or not?
The truck that he has spec-ed out is is it's smaller than the mini pumper. Really, what he has put down here is is a uh, a field truck. He, the pump should be a bigger pump and it should be able to throw more water into the main pump.
So is a tactical fire attack truck different than a mini pumper?
Yeah, yes.
In what way?
It carries less equipment and also the hose. Um, his spec, I don't see any three-inch hose from his back that he's talking about. Um, and and also the pump size. You know, the the pump size that he's looking at is the real basic pump, which is more of a field truck than a mini pumper. The truck was not spec-ed out properly. You need to spend time to do that.
Okay, because and the reason I ask that is because back in two thousand twelve, um, the township was going to apply for an RDA grant in two thousand thirteen for a tactical fire attack truck. And I have a letter here from uh, the chief of Feasterville's Fire Company at the time that fully supported that grant being applied for and also manning it with two people from the fire marshal's office during the day to go out on fires such as Ryan's described. And I was just wondering if things have changed drastically from two thousand twelve to now, where it was more applicable then and it isn't now or?
I I don't really have that letter, Joe.
Well, I have it right here and the letter reads, um, dear township supervisors, as chief of the Feasterville Fire Company, I support the request of purchasing a tactical fire attack truck for the township fire marshal's office. This truck would be manned, always be manned by two fire inspectors, firefighters to enable a quick response to fire emergencies and advanced life support emergencies. This truck will serve the township residents and the volunteer fire companies. Thank you for your continuous support and consideration with this purchase. Respectfully submitted Frankie Walter, Jr., Chief of Feasterville Fire Company. So I was just wondering, is that truck similar to this? And if it is, it sounds to me like it's similar, although not exactly the same, to enable a quicker response during the day, why was it a better idea in two thousand twelve, but it isn't now?
I think the time to change, right? You know what I mean? Like, like Steve said, the pump is really small. It only has five hundred fifty gallon metal pump, you know, with three hundred gallon tank on it, it's going to last for like a minute. You're going to be out of work, you know, so it's it's not feasible, you know, I I we're trying to, you know, I think we're putting the court of works here, I got that earlier. And we really need to sit back and discuss is whether we, you know, point a committee and we should be on discussed and table it. You know, I just think it's not a great idea right at this present time.
Okay, I was just looking for your guys.
I I have some comments on this, I I have more comments. Um, again, this isn't, the mini pumper is not to replace an engine, obviously. And I've been doing a lot of reading on this in different forums, specifically on mini pumppers. And I've seen comments from fire departments from all over, including suburban, rural and urban. And most of the comments are very positive. Uh, because in the wheelbase, I'm getting through traffic, especially for um, brush fires and fuel spills and um, car accidents, car fires. Um, it's a quick, a quick response. Uh, it's, it has very little problems at all. The one problem that I read, and this is back a while, the person said, the fire, um, the firefighter said, all in all the, and this is even, this wasn't even um, as well-equipped as the mini pumper we're speaking of, because the one eighty-six thousand, in my understanding, it's completely equipped. It serves us well. If the only problem they had was been with a crappy six-point-two diesel engine. That was the only prob, one of the only negatives that I that I read about.
What's the water pump size they can read about?
What's that?
What's the water pump size, the GPM?
Well, the majority of them are, was actually three hundred gallons or less.
That's that's how much we're.
Two hundred gallons. The comments were, if the ones that had two hundred gallons were saying, we should have went with the three hundred gallon.
No, he's talking about GPM, Ben.
I'm talking about the GPM, the gallon per milli and pump down.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
You're talking about the water tank. We're talking about gallons.
Right, I'm just talking, I'm just, I'm talking about in general, mini pumppers in general.
Okay, yeah, you're talking about the water tank size.
Yeah, yes, but right, that's what I'm saying. But all and all, most, the comments that I read have been, we want to get a second one. It's done as well. It's a great support for the fire depart, for um, the fire engines. Um, again, it's used with wires, tree, uh, wires and trees. Uh, getting, again, getting through tight spaces, tight driveways. I haven't really, I haven't read anything, I mean, I'm hearing what what you two um, chiefs are saying. And I really, I I under, I hear what you're saying. Uh, it, and it's not to replace an engine. It's it's more, as you heard, as either a support or doing a little brush fires and and instances like that. So in that aspect, you're you're still saying that we're wasting our money, well, I mean, not our money, RDA money, even though it would be a support for you and help out during the day and take care of the, like I said, the brush fires or car auto fires, are you saying?
What we're saying is we have the apparatus here in place that can be used and it needs to be used.
I I.
Okay. We got to, we got to start the budget workshop, guys. We're running over. So maybe we could summarize or sum it up.
Hey Ray, can I have a couple of comments first?
Absolutely.
Um, I I'm I'm a little confused by this whole process. It would seem to me as though the comfort truck, truck, whatever, would be an asset to the fire departments for the quickness or the urgency of uh, of fire being taking place. Sorry, I did that before too, didn't I, Ray? But anyway, I I would think that this would be an asset to the fire department uh, for 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 no other reason than the urgency of advising you guys that something's happening. And and if 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 there's a truck that's driving around, I I'm not so sure how that helps. Uh, maybe I'm a little confused, but I I just don't understand why this is not a good thing for the fire departments. It's an added piece. It's it's uh, it it gets you information quicker.
Pickup truck, it's not just the information.
It's not any quicker, you're on a truck already. They will come to our station, be on a truck all day long. So quicker is out of the equation because they're going to be on the fire truck all day long. It has every capability for any kind of test that comes up in that day. You know, the second question I have too is, you know, every every township around it has a big fire truck. We always look outside, hey, look at Ben's head, what were they doing? Look at Duke's head, what were they doing? Ben's house does have a smaller truck. They already have one big one. So, but you know, utilize the big truck, it's already a plate, everything's on it already. And then where where's the truck going to be parked at? I heard it was parked in the public work building, which is great. What happens when it starts snowing and the public work, there's a truck, there's salt trucks inside. Now you have three hundred gallons of water on this truck. You leave water on the truck, it'll freeze and crack the tank.
There would be, first of all, there being a heater, there being a heater in the public work department for that. So the water does not freeze up. But the trade, we're all, we're all talking the same thing. It's all a trade-off of urgency versus taking a hundred percent of the thing, a hundred percent of a fire, handling a hundred percent of a fire. It's a trade-off of risk, we're getting there quicker, um, and they're the things that we have to weigh. I mean, and I I get what Steve and I get what Dave are saying. Uh, my main thing is not to be competition with this. The main thing is to be supportive of the two fire companies as best as we can and and to provide the residents with the level of urgency and care and need that they need. Um, and that's all I'm trying to do. So I'm not trying to cause any type of ruckus or anything. It's just about getting the job done for everybody and all the residents.
And that and that and that's why, Joe, we should have had this conversation a lot sooner than tonight.
Yeah, we need more than America to discuss this.
I I I apologize that this happened this way. You guys should have been invited well before tonight to a uh, workshop meeting so we could discuss this like we have in the past. You know, I've I've been saying that I view the fire marshal's office and the two fire departments kind of as one group. You guys are all here for the best interest of the township. And if, you know, I've heard tonight over and over that this is to support the fire departments, but it's very clear that the that the fire departments don't support this pumper as of right now. Uh, you know, concerns that hasn't been spec-ed out right, concerns that it's, you know, a little, little uh, possibly a waste of money. I'm not an expert. None of the supervisors are an expert with this. That's why I would have loved to have actually had a full-blown conversation with you guys well before uh, tonight. And I just personally want to apologize to you. I think it was handled horribly on our end.
Well, let me ask you this. What, how would, how would, what is your, I know we're over time, but this is really important. What is your, what is your comment on the thirty-five thousand dollars that the township is going, the township is going to give your, you give it to each department to use as you feel fit?
We appreciate that. We we honor that. We appreciate that. And and, you know, that that's awesome that you're willing to do that. However, we're just, we're trying to utilize the apparatus that we currently have in this township. Dave and I have been trying all year to get the two fire companies to work together and we're being blocked because we're we're told that we cannot fix what needs to be fixed in this township. So I don't know if you guys are aware of that or not. We've been trying all year to get these two fire companies to work together and tackle the emergency in this township. And now we're running out of time. We're being forced to 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 uh, to end this meeting and this should have been done months ago.
Should have.
Well, it was in the hands of of the fire marshal's office, who we've been going to for the past years since Dave became chief. We've been working together and we're getting nowhere.
You said you're being blocked.
That's that's with regard to the cars. That's a separate, that's another issue.
It's the two fire companies working together.
Right.
And that's, and that's what we need to do in this town. And now.
Separate issue from the RDA issue. That's a separate and distinct issue, not together.
I I do agree with Joe Galdo with this.
What more do you know what's going on?
Well, let me ask you this too. Do you, do you want, you said you you need money for your turnout here. Do you want to um, add that to the RDA, like it's thirty-five thousand plus that you're beginning? Plus the difference, you want to add that to the RDA for your turnout here?
Yeah, we, Jim, I think I think a separate vote for you, I don't have the vote in front of me to add that money to that, you know? That's going to be up to the board to decide whether you're going to, you know, add that or, you know, we don't know. We will know if you have a meeting tonight and you can decide what you guys want to do.
Are we able to add a resolution to the RDA, Joe, for the turnout here? Because it's not closed till the thirtieth, so are we able to add that?
Well, I I have a question about the turnout gear. Is that all, is it the same for each, for both fire departments or they, or is it different stuff? And can we get some, something that's the same and get some discounts on the volume? Is that not a possibility or or what?
They don't do discounts on the volume of fire here.
Say again?
They don't do discounts apart here.
That's that's not the, that's not the problem. I mean, what what we need to do is kind of make a distinction. Either we stay at it low, we adjust, and if we adjust, then do we need a special meeting?
We do, we do, because the resolution's not ready tonight, so we would have to come back, have the resolution drawn up, decide what's going to be on the resolution, approve the resolution and have it there, Christina says, by Monday.
Yeah, so I I would say table, table the turnout or table the uh, the mini pumper tonight. Have another meeting like Ray just said and uh, you know, add it, add it, you know, at that time.
So you want to postpone it, not table it? Table means you don't come back to it. You want to postpone it for a special meeting?
Well, I I, you know, my thinking is with the with the mini pumper.
We need a viable solution. We need, if if we're going to insert something else, then we need something viable.
Well, are we going, are we going to pull, are we going to pull the mini pumper out of this equation? Or are we, or are we just going to put it at the very bottom?
Well, that's something we have to, we have to discuss in order.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to discuss the turnout gear to add to the, to the um, RDA.
You don't need, you don't need to do that because you got the thirty-five thousand allocation that's guaranteed.
Is that a line budget?
That would be a budgeted line item, like I said to you when we met.
Have you voted on that yet?
That would be coming up in a budget meeting.
Yeah, otherwise, otherwise you guys are rolling the dice with the RDA on the turnout here. You may end up with nothing.
So is that guaranteed money? You know, you could go to a three.
The RDA isn't.
I thought about the thirty-five thousand. That's a roll of dice too, correct?
So, so why?
That's coming up for vote tonight, but I think, I I mean, my feeling was I would support that and I wouldn't have any problem supporting that thirty-five thousand and that's a guaranteed entity for you guys. You can, you can take that to the bank where the RDA, we don't know if we would get the mini pumper or the turnout gear or any of it, especially in two thousand twenty.
Why would we, why would we pull the thirty-five thousand from the general fund?
It's not from, it's in the capital, it's in the capital reserve fund.
But why would we, why would we pull that even if we were doing the RDA?
It already exists here. It's existing money or appropriations that are there. All we're doing for next year is appropriating the amount, but basically dictating who it goes to and what it's for.
But didn't, gentlemen, didn't you say that the money would be going back because you um, you had purchased the item this year um, that Cindy had come to the meeting about back in February?
That's correct. So you, so you're saying we'll get the thirty-five thousand plus what different RDA issues, is that what you're saying?
Joe, was that your intention? I I.
I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
I said, will we be getting the thirty-five thousand, putting in for the RDA as well?
So you're saying put thirty-five thousand in for the RDA?
No, he says both. He went thirty-five thousand dollars plus RDA, rather than not give the thirty-five thousand dollars and put in for an RDA. That's what I'm hearing.
Not for me to decide.
Call from Dinata.
Meeting, we're going to wrap this up and.
We're seventeen minutes over, guys.
Yeah, I I just feel like maybe we could just, you know, have another meeting early next week, later this week, whatever, however it works. I just feel like there's still more conversation that needs to be talked about.
And the and the question is, even if we do submit the RDA applications as it is, maybe the mini pumper doesn't get funded and and we're, and then anyway, you still have to use the vehicle from the two, the two fire trucks. Who knows?
But nobody's saying to take the mini, we haven't decided to take the mini pumper off the list. We're talking about adding to the list.
Correct.
Not taking it off the list.
Would you have to have a grant for that, Joe?
Yes, and we we would have to have another uh, another meeting to put that on, to add on.
I mean, my understanding, the fire marshal's office also needs here, so.
No, that that the one eighty-six thousand is, it's completely stocked.
No, no, you're wrong.
Oh, I asked that question. I asked that question and it was yes, the answer is it's completely stocked at one eighty-six thousand. Is that wrong, uh, Joe?
It's a, what they're saying, it it, they're not used to RDA grants. An RDA grant, like for a police vehicle, when it's outfitted, you just don't buy it from the vendor. You go to the vendor as well as get the technology and all the accessories. So you may have three different vendors, but it's all one permission to the RDA. This is following that same pattern.
Right.
Steve and Dave, how much money do you guys need for your turnout here? You gave us two figures, right?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three thousand two hundred and five per month.
And Steve?
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, seventy-six.
So Joe, why don't we just, i- instead of that, instead of, instead of rolling a dice with the RDA, why don't we, instead of giving them thirty-five thousand, give them each another fifteen thousand? They can get the turnout gear they need. It's guaranteed and. And then we put in for the RDA resolution as we have it. That way, they get what they get the gear they need, we roll the dice on the mini pumper, the thing gets out faster uh and and if we get it, we get it, if we don't, we don't, but those guys get the turnout gear they need. Then we don't have to do a resolution, come back for another meeting, it's fully funded, it's a done deal. Is, can we do that with, within our current financial situation?
I could, I could, I could maneuver that.
Would you guys be okay with that?
I like that.
That, that's fine, I still don't think this is the the right truck for what you're looking to use.
I get that, no, no, I get that, Steve, I I am, I fully understand that part of it. I'm just talking about so you guys can get the turnout gear you need. And then if the board decides to go with the mini pumper, you guys have your gear. And then if we decide to go with it, we roll the dice with it, if not, we don't.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
I I appreciate that, appreciate you all.
Is the board okay with that?
Absolutely, I support that one hundred percent.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Let's do it. Because I want, I want them to have, obviously turnout here is life, it's, it's, you need it. It's life sustaining, it's critical, just like the cascade was critical and you didn't get money for that, which was very disappointing. Here, we're giving it, we're giving you what you need without rolling of the dice.
It's not perfect, but you guys at least are are covered gear-wise, you're guaranteed. And then, you know, whatever we decide to do with the mini pumper is unforeseen, yet we'll know in another hour. But, you know, that way, you know, that, I don't know, that, to me, that seems like a decent uh deal.
I appreciate that. Need. I just hope the board, you know, listen to Steve and I and our years of experience and where we're coming from, I appreciate you guys listening to us. But we all, we'll get down and talk and sort out the other issue as well. Communication's key, unfortunately, communication wasn't key in this incident.
Well, I'd like to see you guys all come in, Steve, Dave and Ryan and Joe and maybe a couple of board members and sit down at a roundtable sometime in the near future and air out whatever is eaten away and then try to all be on the same team.
But it needs to be done soon because the radio.
I agree.
Is getting ready to make their switch over and for us to get it taken care of, it needs to be done soon.
I I would be in on that roundtable, thank, for sure.
Just as a high-end fire marshal too, it's gonna happen sooner or later as well, to help us.
All right, guys, we gotta run onto this, unless the board has any other, I don't want to cut anybody off, but we gotta start our budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chiefs, for being here, very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dave, thank you.
Thank you.
So now we go off and get into the other.
Off and on?
Do we have to get off?
Yes, we have to get off and join the six-thirty-five meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll see you there.